Evening and welcome to the May 8, 2014, meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. As with all our meetings, we'd like to start off by saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We have four items on our agenda tonight, a couple of preliminary and final public hearings, and then we have a couple of sketch plans which are a more informal look at proposed projects. After, the way the system, or the way our process works is the applicant will present their project, members of the board will ask questions, and then we open up the floor for members of the audience that are here, and we welcome your comments. It's a big reason why we have the public hearings is we want to hear what everybody thinks about proposed applications. Once that's over with, we reconvene back in the back of the auditorium to finish up our business for the evening. So with that, Mark, would you please read the first application?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First application, Edwin A. Summerhays, LS, 2059 Browncroft Boulevard, Suite 209, Rochester, New York, 14625. On behalf of UGA, requests under Article 9-9-2 of the code for preliminary and final site plan approval to construct a 2,872 square foot dental office located at 2,100 Penfield Road on 0.46 acres. The property is now or formerly owned by Bernard and Anita Marvin and his zone BNR. Application number 14P-0012, SBL number 139.08-1-61.
It's all yours, Ed.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just to reemphasize, my name is Ed Summerhays with offices on Browncroft Boulevard, and I'm here with my clients tonight as well as their architect for a final review and approval of this project. I'll try to, I'll make my introduction brief here because you have seen this before since the concept that you saw, I believe it was in February, and the letter of comments and recommendations from that meeting, we have addressed. But basically, we have a 100 by 200-foot lot with an existing house. That existing house will be taken down and a dentist office to be reconstructed. The dentist office is going to be 2,872 square feet at the present time, and it's going to be serviced by existing public water and existing sanitary lateral. The sanitary lateral goes to the rear of the property, so they're, during the demolition of the house, they'll protect both the sanitary lateral and the water service and reutilize Probably the major portion of this project has been in the drainage study because we're adding 66, we're having a 66 percent lot coverage between the pavement, the private drive, the parking, the private drive, the sidewalks, and the actual building. However, we did receive, we attended the zoning board and got a variance from the zoning board for that, as well as the fact that the rear of the parcel, the rear 30 feet of the parcel is going to be dedicated to a common access, ingress egress access due to the town resolution where they want to eliminate the curb cuts along Penfield Road and access for the back. So we've lost 30 feet of the rear yard due to that, and everything has moved forward. So we have also received the variance for the front setback variance. Our front setback minimum, we're at 40, not 50, and the side setback which is at 17, not 20, but we did receive those variances. But the drainage study that I started to talk about is what we have done is we've directed all the roof runoff on the west side of the house. It's going to be going to a splash block which would then via yard swale be directed to the rain garden. On the east side of the house, it's going to be in a conveyor system, underground conveyor system that would open up and then go via a ground swale to the rain garden. So the roof runoff is going to be handled by the, by the rain garden at the southwest corner of the house. And the parking area and driveway, that impervious area is going to be directed to an infiltration trench and a Triton storage system. It's a combination storage and infiltration because it's a big dome where we have a void for the storage of water, but that's constructed inside gravel so that, so that that also will permeate out or infiltrate out into the ground. So we're, so that it's right now designed so that theoretically nothing more will leave the lot than what's already leaving the lot now. And I have responded or received comments from the Conservation Board, the DRC, Monroe County Planning, and so forth, and we have written, which I believe you all have had a chance to review, we're pretty much in agreement and compliance with all of, all of the comments received. I'd say that the only one or two that were not, one of the comments asked for a privacy fence to be installed on the easterly property line, and I thought it was inappropriate to comply with that request because there's already in existence a chain link fence that belongs to the adjacent owner on that line. And with the number of trees along there, we'd have to take down those trees to construct this fence, and I think it, and then you're putting a privacy fence right up against the chain link fence, and I just think that's inappropriate at this time. I just received yesterday afternoon comments from the Conservation Board, and I got a letter sent off. I believe you under, you got that tonight? I just gave Mark the hard copy of that letter. And I'm, we're, I think the main issue was to show the, on sheet two, I have the original conditions, and I can show, there's so many trees that I couldn't, it would not be, it wouldn't, it would be, it would be very crowded. It would be a black line if I were to try to show them individually, but there's a row of about 25 to 30 trees. They range from four inches to 10 inches. And I can show them on sheet two, on the original, the original conditions portion of sheet two, I can just show a row of trees. They're oriental maples. And then the only, the, there was also a request, kind of unusual coming from the Conservation Board, but there was a request to put in another ramp, a handicap ramp in the backyard. My response was that, or in the back, on the back walk. So my, my response is that for this size project, ADA compliance would be one handicap space and ramp, and because all the patients will be coming in the front, our handicap spot is in the front with the ramp there. So at this time, I, I would say I don't believe it would be necessary. The other thing I'm a little concerned about, we're already at 66. If, if the board and the planning board and, and the powers that be thought it was necessary, if I can leave the mic here, but I'm going to show the most south-
There might be a cordless one, yeah, right there.
Now I need your eye tech guy.
There is a way to turn it on.
I just unmuted it, it should be fine. Oh, okay, I got it, I got it, I got it. All right. Over here, this parking lot, or this parking lot at the, you still can't hear me, can't you? At the northwest corner of the building where we have the park, the sidewalk going around the building. If we thought it was really necessary to have a ramp in the, for the, in the backyard, we could take this walk and ramp outside, extend that northerly with a ramp so that a handicap person could park in here and exit out and roll up here. But again, I get concerned about that when we're already at, at a 66 percent coverage. This is going to increase our lot coverage, and I think if there, you will be able to schedule her appointment so she only has one handicap person there at the time. So with that, I will, I'll let you hit your questions.
Ask away. All right, I think this is yours.
Yes. Ed, getting back to the, the handicap ramp, if someone else was to come that needed a ramp and there was a vehicle parked in the designated handicap space, would there be space for someone to use that one ramp?
There would be, the, I only have the one parking spot-
Right.
-in front, so if that spot were occupied by a handicap vehicle-
I'm just wondering-
At the present time, I don't have, that's the only ramp that we have designed for this, so they would have to-
Okay, would there be enough clearance if someone was dropped off there-
Oh, yes.
-to access that ramp?
Oh, absolutely.
So worst case, they could be helped into the building, and then the car could be parked in the back.
Yes, absolutely, yes. I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
Okay. And also is, what's the, the lighting plan for that site external?
Actually, that's a great question that I have, maybe for the architect. I, I've been talking to you about this for, actually, since we got our first set of comments, and she has not picked the exterior lighting. Right now, in, in my application, I have been saying that we would have a couple of lights attached to the building that are dark sky compliant. As a matter of fact, I saw one on the internet that I printed out and showed her, and it's covered from the top, so there's nothing leaving the top, and it's a light that's directed down. But obviously, we'd have to know more information about that as far as where they would be on the building before we could provide a photometric plan of the lighting plan. So when we get to that point, we can provide the town with it, but I don't have it for this, for this particular site plan. I think it would have to come in as a supplement, a supplemental approval for, for the building department, unless you have worked on anything since then. No, no.
Can I just have a follow-up with that?
Sure, sure.
Any, something mounted on the building probably won't make it back to the back end of the parking lot? Are any poles considered?
I, I have not planned them at this time. If, if the lighting from the, I, I would think that number one, her hours are going to be pretty much till 5, 6 o'clock at night, so the only time that's going to be an issue would be during the winter months when it's dark.
Eight months out of the year here.
Yeah.
Oh, that was just this year. So, no, if, if we, if that doesn't make it, we would most likely, and I'm going to leave the podium here for a minute. I, I see actually two options. Two, two lights mounted on the building-
Yep.
-that are directed more towards the, sorry, no disrespect intended on that. But there would, that they could be mounted on the building but directed towards, towards the back. There are no private residences on the back, so I don't think that that would be an issue. And again, they could be calculated and positioned right so that they would hit the, light the rear of the parking lot without encroaching on the neighbors or, or the school.
Okay.
And I just had one more question. Ed, what's the timeframe for this project?
For the construction?
Yes.
Well, you was very anxious to close on this. We've already had to extend the purchase offer a couple of times, and I think once she closes, I think she would like to be in by this fall, if I underst-, yeah. So it would, as soon as, as soon as we get our proper approvals in order, we're, we're going to be going with it in, in accordance with some of the comments. I've already been in contact and met with the state DOT, working with them on this, on the state permits, and also the Monroe County Pure Waters to get the sewer certification letter that they were looking for.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else have some questions? I'm, you know, we're probably going to beat up the lighting plan a little bit, not right here right now, but-
Right.
-it's something that we need to address.
Okay, so we'll, so we, we will concentrate on that then.
Yeah. Doug?
Ed, regarding the trees, it looks like you have five or six trees that are coming down as part of the project, is that right? Pretty, they're significant trees?
Yes, they're shown on sheet two. We have, there was, I think, three in the backyard, three significant trees.
And how many are you putting back in?
There's one, two, three, four, five trees are coming down and, which actually, two of them were requested to be taken out by the landscaping consultant as well as planning because one of them that we were trying to save just was positioned in that, one of the swales that was directed towards the thing. So we're taking those five out, but then we're also putting in two street trees out at the front corners of the house.
Is there an opportunity to put a couple more in, especially in the back there, which doesn't look like you have any trees going, I see a couple that are staying, but especially on that west side?
And, well, on the west side, the, the fence that's existing there, that is theirs that, again, is a request from the previous comments, that fence is going to be coming out. The trees that are along there are, are about a foot to, to two feet inside the fence. The fence is one, about one foot, one corner, it's one foot off the property line, at the back corner, it's about a half a foot off the property line, and the trees are one to two feet off of that. So if we put in our privacy fence, it's going to leave a gap in those trees, plus my client does not really like that type of tree. They, they'd like to take those down, and so I'm agreeing with her in the-
Which trees are you talking about, on the east side or the-
Those are, that's a row of trees- That's along the fence on the west side. And those, as I say, are ornamental, or oriental maples, and it's, it's, I'm not sure I want to call it a weed tree, but it's, it's not a tree of value.
But they're not in-
And they would like to take all of those down.
But they're not on your property?
They are on our property.
Oh, okay.
So we have just not shown any landscaping along there. The town has already requested, or we're putting up a six-foot-high privacy fence for coverage there. And then you have also on sheet two, the landscaping plan with a number of bushes and the two street trees, dogwood, I believe. But over in that back corner, we have nothing planned at this point.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions from the board right now? Excuse me. Would anyone in the audience like to comment on this application? Nobody? Okay. Do you have any other comments?
Do you have anything to add? Obviously, we're going to, they're going to be looking for some lighting plans, so I'm going to have to rely on, on you two to get together for the lighting schemes and schematics. So no, I guess we don't have anything else to add.
Okay.
They have their charge now, so.
Sounds great. Thanks for your nice job.
All right, thank you.
And we'll call this hearing closed. Mark, if you'd like to read the next item, that'd be terrific.
Yep. Application number two, Carmen Torcia, Torcia Structural Engineering and Design, PC, 625 Panorama Trail, Suite 2210, Rochester, New York, 14625. On behalf of the Genesee Conservation League, requests under Article 3-3-10 and 9-9-2 of the code for preliminary and final site plan approval and EPod permit approval for the construction of a 1,685 plus or minus square foot enclosed shooting range with associated improvements on 33.79 acres at 1570 Old Penfield Road. The property is now or formerly owned by Genesee Conservation League, Inc., and is zoned R-120. This is application number 14P-0013, SBL number 123.20-1.1.
Hello, everyone. My name is Carmen Torcia, as you said, Torcia Structural Engineering. Our office is located at 625 Panorama Trail, Rochester, New York. With me tonight is Matt Richpeter, he's one of my architects. Also is John Fitzpatrick here and Wayne Chiketti, who's with the Genesee Conservation League. The property is located at 1570 Old Penfield Road, and it is zoned R-120, as you said. It consists of approximately 33.2 acres, and just so that you have an idea of the size of our project, it's going to disrupt about .15 acres out of the whole thing. We're here tonight because our client would like to construct a one-story, approximately 1,700 square foot masonry addition, which will be used for additional indoor range. The new indoor range will be located between the current indoor range and the, and the meeting room, which is shown there in the, in the darker brown, you could see it. So it basically fills in that space. As far as any membership increase, there won't be any, so as a result, we're not, we don't have to add any, any more parking. The site work is very minimal. The only thing we have to do is regrade a little bit, as you could, right in this area, just so we can accommodate the, the exit door from the range. We did receive comments from Monroe County Town Engineer and Planning. They were ve, all very minor comments. We can address them no problem. We can comply with them. It's not any issue. We also spoke to Frank Ricotta from New York State, D.C. He had a couple of questions for us, which we answered, sent us, we communicated by email. He did send us a response. After he heard our answers, he had no issues with our project. Can now, basically, it's a pretty simple project that's, I can open it up to questions. I'll answer any engineering and architectural questions that you have. As far as day-to-day operation stuff, I'll leave that up to John. Thank you.
Can you just describe, you know, architecturally, the appearance of how the additional fit in with the existing?
Sure. So basically, here's the floor plan. What you see there that's colored in, that's, that's what we're, we're adding, and it's going to be built between the, this side of the building and that side of the building. And you can see it here in elevation. It's going to be white and with green trim.
Could you, Carmen, do you mind using the handheld-
Oh.
-mic? Millions at home watching.
Okay.
Can't hear you.
So it's, this is the, the addition portion right here, okay? And then these are the other views, the north elevation and the south elevation. This is the door that I was telling you about that we had to raise the grade a little bit to accommodate. And this right in here is where there's an exhaust fan shed, this little bump out here that they need to move air in and out. And so it's going to match the, the existing building. It'll be block, just like the old building, the existing building. And the trim is green, which is, matches the colors that are out there.
Any noise generated from that exhaust fan that's, you know, potentially heard off-site or?
The consideration-
If you don't mind getting up and introducing yourself, that'd be terrific. Thanks.
John Fitzpatrick, Executive Officer, Genesee Conservation League. The question had to do with exhaust fan, and the design that we chose is actually a double diversion in terms of the airflow. So the exhaust fan is contained within a concrete, small portion of the building, and then the air, it takes a 90-degree turn, and then it takes another 90-degree turn out through a louver system. So we're not, we're not expecting it to have any signature outside of just the close proximity to that, that louver.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I'm just curious, is, is, what happens in this addition? Is it more shooting? And what about sound from that? How is the soundproofing in that versus the rest of the building?
Carmen, I'll just stay here with you. Yeah, that's fine. I'll just take things. It is, it is an indoor range, and it's designed specifically for shooting. We, we wanted to afford our shooters an opportunity to come in from the outside and be able to work indoors where we can actually better control and do the sound mitigation indoors. So this was, this is a consideration from feedback we have gotten over the past couple of years, and been a focus of ours for several years now, and, and that's why we're approaching the boards for approval to do this work, to help reduce that sound signature.
Any other questions from the board?
Carmen, you mentioned that you've satisfied all the town comments.
I, I said that we can satisfy them.
Just out of curiosity, the one from Jeff Benway on the compensatory water storage because you're in a flood plain there, where is that going to be?
Water storage?
Yeah.
We're above the flood plain from, from the research we've done. We have a, a map here that we brought with us.
And so, yeah, and we can address that because when we resurfaced the driveway a couple of years back, we took into consideration for that and actually modified this area in here to take care of that water. And so we're, we're expecting to just shed that water into that same area there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyone in the audience like to comment on this application? Ma'am, if you could-
I just have a question. We live right, if you mind you guys.
If, if you could come up and introduce yourself up to the podium, please, and give us your name and address and credit card information. Okay, you don't have to do the credit card information.
My question is the concern for the noise especially, and I heard you say that you wouldn't be getting more gun, gun shooters with this building. So does that mean that there won't be any, as much outside shooting, or they'll all be inside, or it'll be both?
Do you mind introducing yourself and giving us your address?
Okay, I'm Judy DeGennaro, 46 Los Mountain Trail.
Thank you.
So I can address that question. Our intent is by expanding these indoor facilities that it'll afford outdoor shooters an opportunity to come indoors and, and hopefully-
It'll be optional?
We're hopefully-
It'll be optional?
It is an optional, yes.
All right. So it'll be a little less sound than, than there is now?
That's our intent and our hope.
Okay, that's why I'm here.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I've got a question too.
Okay.
As far as, for the inside of it, okay? Now, outside, we get a lot of noise. We get a lot of gun shooting during the day.
Sir?
James DeGennaro, 46 Los Mountain Trail.
And if you could address your questions to us, and then we can-
Okay, yeah. My, my question is, is it more soundproof inside? How soundproof is it? Because there are going to be a lot of gun shooting, and how many at one time can be shooting? Because we get a lot of noise, we're up on the hill, and everything comes up, okay? And there's, but we, we put up with it because they've been there a lot longer than we have. But how much more noise is it going to be, and how many are going to be shooting inside, and how insulated is it?
Okay.
So the design is one, that it's, it's block walls, it's infilled, solid block walls. So it's a, it's a concrete cinder block filled with concrete, and then we have a, we're putting a lining on the inside of that. So our measurements on our current range, and we've done sound mitigation on the current indoor range to bring that signature down. It's, it's compliant with the sound requirements. We expect it to be- We expect it to be as good or better than what we've currently got for the indoor range.
So there will be more shooters in there at a time? Like, outside, we will hear the automatic guns going at one time, and there's gonna be one or two at a time going, or then we'll hear shotguns, or we'll hear pistols or whatever outside. So I don't imagine most of the AK-15s are gonna be shooting inside, then? There'll be mostly pistol shooting inside?
The indoor, the indoor range will accommodate both pistol and small caliber rifle. So we would expect to move some of the rifle shooters indoors as well.
So we'll, the outdoors won't be probably as noisy and as many shooting. I have, I've never been to your range, so I don't know how many stand out there shooting, or how many at one time can shoot inside. How many stations have you got?
We're increasing the facility by six more positions, so we can accommodate six more shooters indoors. So, and we're just, we're playing the law of averages here. You know, we look at the number of shooters we have at any given time, and we feel that, you know, we're maximizing the space to give an opportunity for six more shooters to come indoors.
Well, I know normally you don't have that many at one time, you know? I mean, the guys can't be in there together much, you know? So, but we'll probably then be, you know, a little less noisy on the outside when they're shooting, if they go inside a lot of times, or pistols at least.
Yes, and that's our desire. And we can actually, we can go full occupancy indoors. We can accommodate enough shooters and, you know, they share the facility, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other members care to, sir? If you could come up and give us your name and address and address your questions to us, please, that'd be terrific.
Terry Ricard. I live at one-ten Huntington Meadow, and also manage or have a property at fifty-nine Lost Mountain Trail, where my developmentally disabled brother lives. And I am not anti-gun. I spent twenty-three years with the Rochester Police Department, and we held a firearms tournament at the Conservation League many years back, when my hair was brown and not gray. The concern I've had over the years is the increase in the noise of all firearms, from the small caliber to things that sound like cannons down there, and the disruption it provides to the community. And this just isn't Lost Mountain Trail, this just isn't Huntington Meadow, this is all of the neighborhood in that area. In fact, a friend of mine was looking to buy a house in our neighborhood. She saw one on Mountain Trail last weekend. She was there while the gunfire was going off and said, yeah, no way unless I had a free membership. So, I mean, my concern is, there doesn't seem to be any mandatory requirement that some of the shooters move inside. And I realize the benefits of being able to shoot outside, but it's also, you know, that area has also become a residential area and not farmers' fields with corn growing in them. So the entire atmosphere has changed, and the noise that is being created in that entire sector, not just a couple of streets, is just amazing. And we get a feeling for what it would be like in Afghanistan or Iraq during a firefight, because of all the noise that's generated because of that. So, I mean, I would support the project wholeheartedly if there was some way other than the Conservation League looking for volunteers to shoot inside, that some way we could reduce the number of shooters that are shooting outside and bring them to the inside of the facility. You know, I think it's a great idea. I'm not against the Conservation League down there. I'd like to bring my grandkids down there to learn to shoot, but I don't want to put them in an environment where you've got all these different weapons all over the place. And in the neighborhood, we've got all the, all the noise coming from this. It's not just one guy from Huntington Meadow or one person from Lost Mountain Trail. You're gonna find this concern all over. And I know the town has fought this beforehand with what a Conservation League can do and what the requirements are from the town. But, I mean, if you're at all worried, you might wanna stop by there any day and just And I would hope that this proposal, if approved, would move some of that noise to an indoor facility where, and I spent twenty-three years with the RPD, all of our people qualified in indoor range on Scottsville Road, occasionally in outdoor range, but it was far away from civilization. Yeah. Come down, take a look, listen to the noise during the, you know, the average day. There's a time for beginning, and there's a time for ending that the Conservation League is held to. But in the meantime, you just have constant gunfire, both heavy equipment, heavy shotguns, deer rifles, thirty ought sixes, from what I'm hearing. You're hearing a lot of semi-automatics going off down there. If some of that can be transitioned in to make the quality of life in the neighborhood improved within the guidelines of what the Conservation League has already been given, then I'm, I'm fully supportive of that. But I'm not supportive of just saying, yeah, let's build another building, when it's probably not gonna have any impact on the quality of life in that neighborhood. And it, this board hasn't heard it, but Huntington Meadow is on the list of the things that Tony LaFountain gets grayer hair over. So we, we bought the house without the idea of what the speed humps had to produce before the speed humps, and I had forgotten that there was a Conservation League down there until we bought the house and we were starting to move in, I heard the gunfire, and I went for one of my pistols. It sounded like a war going on. So, yeah, enough said. But those are, those are my concerns, and they're basically quality of life. I'm not anti-Conervation League, I'm not anti-gun. I think there should be places for that, but I think it can be better managed to live within a neighborhood than we're doing right now.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else care to comment on this application? Anyone else from the board have additional comments? Sure, Doug?
Just one, maybe if the owner could address that question or concern, is there any way to encourage people to stay indoors and shoot rather than outside, or?
Absolutely.
Maybe particular days of the week have everybody shoot indoors, or there's something like that?
Absolutely, yeah. It's very easy to do, and we can use signage and just through our, through our newsletter, just encourage the membership to take advantage of the indoor range, you know, as much as possible. I mean, this is, this is something we're working towards. We've hurt our neighbors, and we understand the quality of life issue, and we wanna address that. We are a Conservation League, and so, you know, we're trying to do that. We've invested heavily the last three years in capital. We've done sound mitigation both on indoor and outdoor facilities. We expect to continue that, that effort. We wanna be, you know, good neighbors in the community.
Okay, great. Do you have any final, Mr. Chairman? Okay, what, sorry?
I think we're all set. Just had a quick question. The soil material, is that gonna all stay on site? What's the plan for any of the soil that's excavated out?
There isn't gonna be much, because the only footings we have are just for that front little area there that we're gonna be digging. And we're gonna need to put some fill underneath the slab, so that's it. We're gonna lose it there.
So nothing's being taken offsite?
No.
It's all being utilized in place?
Yep. There's not, there's not gonna be much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll call this hearing closed and move on to our first sketch plan.
Sketch, application number one, Ed Martin, P.E., Land Tech Surveying and Planning, L.L.C., three-seven-zero-eight St. Paul Boulevard, Rochester, New York, one-four-six-one-seven. On behalf of Dr. Lawrence Jean Greco, request an informal discussion with the board regarding the construction of a three thousand plus or minus square foot dental office with associated improvements located at twelve-eighty-five and twelve-eighty-nine Creek Street on one acre. The property is now or formerly owned by Creek Street LLC in its own GB. Application number fourteen P dash zero zero one four, SBL number zero-nine-three-point-one-five dash one dash fifty-five, and zero-nine-three-point-one-five dash one dash fifty.
All right. Floor is all yours.
Good evening. My name is Ed Martin. As Mark mentioned, I am an engineer with Land Tech here tonight representing Dr. Jean Greco, who's in attendance also, in the event that you have questions that are best answered by him. The property is one acre in total area, located at twelve-eighty-five and twelve-eighty-nine Creek Street. Twelve-eighty-five is just under a half acre, and twelve-eighty-nine is just over a half acre. There is an existing house at twelve-eighty-nine that Dr. Jean Greco would like to retain. In addition to that, construct a three thousand square foot dental practice. He currently operates on Empire Boulevard and has been extremely successful and wants to plant some roots here in this community. He projects as many as ten patients at a time. There are ten chairs, and I do believe preliminary architectures have been distributed that show that. He has up to twelve employees at any one time. We propose a total of fifty-five parking spaces throughout the site. That includes nineteen landbanked spaces to the south or on the twelve-eighty-nine property. There are four spaces in front of the existing house that Mr. Benway has commented that he'd like to see eliminated. I'm not sure that that's a real sticking point at this point, but it's food for thought. We do propose thirty parking spaces for Dr. Jean Greco's practice, so when you add up the twelve employees at any one time, ten patients and chairs in transition, that's where we come up with the thirty. We did have a pre-application meeting with Mr. Valentine and understand that the town is looking to utilize shared accesses in this area whenever possible, so we do propose a shared access point. And there are comments in the PRC comments that we received, speaking to additional cross-access with Tim Hortons. We have had preliminary conversations with them. The project's been very well received, and we hope to have a letter of support from them prior to a public hearing for that. Stormwater management is somewhat unique here. We're proposing infiltration. We're gonna direct all runoff to the center part of the parking lot and infiltrate it in a perforated pipe, as well as an excavated basin at the northwest corner. Should that capacity be exceeded by large storms, it would spill over into an existing pipe that bisects the site. Mr. Benway did ask us in his comments to check the capacity of that storm sewer, so we're prepared to do that. We're here tonight looking for some preliminary feedback from you, hoping that the project can grab some, can get some traction and that we can move into more detailed design. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, I had one question, Ed. The comments from PRC, it sounds like you went through those. Did you see any issues with those comments?
No, sir. Other than the obvious zoning ones, I neglected to mention that we are scheduled to appear before the Zoning Board of Appeals on May nineteenth for several variances. I can outline those real quickly for you. We're looking for a variance to allow lot coverage for number twelve-eighty-five to exceed the sixty-five percent maximum. I wanna point out that the project as a whole falls below the sixty-five percent, but the individual lot will exceed the sixty-five percent. We're asking for a four-point-seven-foot side setback, whereas code requires twenty. We're asking for a forty-seven-foot side setback for, actually, they should.
Ed, can I interrupt you for a second?
Certainly.
Go back to the, so you're not proposing to combine the lots?
Correct.
You're proposing to keep them as two tax parcels, and you mentioned that one will be below the green space threshold, and one will be above?
Yes, sir.
But the project as a whole meets it?
Correct.
And any reason why you don't wanna combine them?
I think at the risk of speaking for Dr. Jean Greco, so if I misspeak, by all means jump in, he's considering his options for that property. It became available holistically, so the house itself doesn't meet his need for the dental practice, so now he's considering his options, whether it's auxiliary business for this or marketing it for other uses, which is partially why we have the land banked parking, just to have that option.
Did, did you consider, there was one comment, rotating the footprint of that building, so the variances, some of the variances anyway, wouldn't be required?
We did look at that initially, and Dr. Jean Greco's clientele tend to be elderly, and so one of his needs is to provide a very safe and easy drop-off at the main entrance. So by rotating the building ninety degrees from what you have, it actually eliminates the presence on Creek Street, which as I understand, the zoning really wants the frontage and the presence to be seen from Creek Street and parking behind it. So we would lose a fair amount of that, and we would end up having side yard parking, which from Creek Street would actually look like front yard parking. And we would also compromise the ability to safely drop off his patients. You'll note there's a covered entryway. It's, and I think we've shown it probably larger than how it's actually gonna be constructed, so the subsequent plans that we submit will be more detailed. But, so right now, they're able to be dropped off very safely offline of main traffic, and I think we would lose that by rotating it. So I think in summary, I think we're able to meet the desire of the zoning district and the rear parking and the presence on Creek Street and meet all of Dr. Jean Greco's business needs.
Okay, thank you.
So, Ed, this is currently two properties, or is that one property? In other words, is that a new property line that's dividing the two?
No, sir, that's actually existing.
Okay.
I believe you said there were four variances you were gonna ask for?
There's actually five.
Five? You spoke about two of them, one of the other ones.
Yep. There's a hundred-foot buffer to a residential district. There's a pre-existing non-conforming condition, but in talking, and I'm drawing a blank on the name.
Harold, Morehouse?
Mr. Morehouse. He said, you know what, let's clean up the record of this, let's go ahead and ask for the variance. The existing house at twelve-eighty-nine is only sixteen-point-two feet from the south property line, which is a residential district. This being general business, the code requires a hundred-foot buffer. And then lastly, we're asking for nine feet by twenty-foot parking spaces, whereas the code, I'm sorry, nine by eighteen, whereas the code specifies nine by twenty.
That's four, you said there were five?
And then there were the two side setbacks.
Oh, the two side setbacks.
The two setback variances in addition to the lot coverage, so that makes five.
What's the timeframe?
For construction?
Yeah, when would you like to have it done?
April of next year.
April of next year.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Anyone in the audience care to comment on this application or this discussion? It's not really an application. Okay. Nice job. We will, what we typically do is discuss what you've presented, come up with a letter with our comments, which you will get in probably, I can't promise exactly when, but it won't be too long.
Hopefully, we'll get it out early next week. The board will close this public hearing, return to the back of the room. You're welcome to stay and listen to the discussion if you'd like, but ultimately, the board would direct staff to send a sketch letter to you detailing their, you know, questions, concerns, and then it's up to you whether you wanna proceed to preliminary final at that point in time.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sketch plan number two.
TY Lynn International, two fifty-five East Avenue, Rochester, New York, one four six zero four. On behalf of Nicholas D'Angelo, request an informal discussion with the board regarding the construction of an eleven-lot, single-family residential cluster subdivision on thirteen point three one acres located at fourteen sixty-nine Jackson Road. The properties now are formerly owned by Nicholas D'Angelo in his zone RR one. Application number fourteen P dash zero zero one five, SBL number one zero nine point zero two dash one dash twelve point one.
Hi, uh, I'm Rick Ailing with TY Lynn International Engineering. Our office at, is at two fifty-five East Avenue in Rochester. Um, also with me tonight is Nick D'Angelo, the owner of the property. Um, we are seeking a discussion with the board in advance of an application to develop, uh, fourteen sixty-nine Jackson Road, which is approximately fourteen acres, uh, of land, um, with eleven single-family homes, um, as a cluster development. Um, the, we anticipate that, uh, the homes will be, uh, will be larger, um, uh, type of homes. Um, the lots are about three quarters of an acre, up to, uh, one point two acres for the larger lots. Um, the project does include, um, approximately two acres of land, which is proposed, uh, for the detention pond, um, adjacent to Jackson Road, uh, to be dedicated, um, to the town of Penfield, uh, for municipal use and ownership. The, uh, the plan was created, uh, with, uh, consideration for maintaining some of the mature vegetation and stone rows along the property lines to the north and west, uh, specifically, um, as well as a large hedgerow, um, in the area of the, uh, um, private drive, uh, at the west end of the project. Um, the, a portion of the site, uh, adjacent to Jackson Road, um, is encumbered by New York State DEC, uh, wetland adjacent area. Um, that is the, uh, area that we're proposing to be dedicated and to, uh, to contain the proposed detention pond. Um, the, uh, th- that area was previously developed with, uh, farm buildings and a home. Um, so the, uh, the proposed pond is a significant reduction in the intensity of the use of that land. Um, we have, uh, had a wetland delineation prepared by Environmental Resources, which has been concurred with by the, uh, New York State DEC and, um, Environmental Resources has had a discussion with the DEC and as our understanding that, um, the pond would be permitted or even one home, um, would be permissible in the, uh, adjacent area. Um, it's important to note that there are no impacts to the wetland, uh, proposed, uh, only the adjacent area. And, uh, that would be a reduction in the use from, uh, from buildings to a pond. Um, and, and we anticipate that that, uh, would be permissible, um, based on our interaction with the DEC. Um, the project will be served by public utilities. Um, we're proposing a low-pressure forced main sanitary sewer extension from Jackson Road, uh, approximately, um, thirteen hundred feet to the south. Um, there's an existing, uh, two-inch low-pressure force main in that area. We're proposing to extend to serve this, uh, this property. Um, we, uh, we are in receipt of some comments from the town of Penfield staff, uh, the PRC and the conservation board, uh, many of which are, um, technical in nature. We're prepared to discuss any or all of these at requests of the board. Um, I, uh, I guess that's it. No entertaining questions.
Could you, uh, go through the rationale for the two seventy-eight versus, uh, conventional plan?
Okay. Um, the, the site, uh, i- is encumbered by, um, uh, a New York State DEC wetland, which is, uh, located, uh, at the south, southern portion of the site adjacent to Jackson Road. So if you could see the plan, um, this is an L-shaped parcel. The leg to the south of the L is, uh, pretty much where the wetland, uh, adjacent area is. Um, we had, uh, originally laid this out as conventional site plan, which I could flip to. This area here, um, which shows, uh, a single home along Jackson Road, um, which is partially in the adjacent area. Um, the, the plan would, would, uh, lay out with, uh, twelve homes if two homes were in the adjacent area, but our understanding is that one home, um, would be permissible in that area. So that's the way that, that we've, uh, we've indicated it to be. Um, by, by going to, uh, the, the layout that we're proposing here, we're minimizing the impact of that adjacent area by having all the homes located outside of the wetland buffer.
Okay, and so the, that's the proposed, uh, benefit?
Yes. The benefit of two seventy-eight, um, it, part of that is, is minimizing impact to the wetland buffer. Additionally, uh, we're proposing one point nine acres of land to be dedicated to the town of Penfield, which is adjacent to existing, um, conservation lands, um, as part of the, uh, which are part of the, uh, thousand-acre swamp.
Okay. Yeah.
On the conventional plan, would, uh, any variances be required?
No.
All the setbacks are met?
Yes. These are larger lots.
Okay, thanks. Uh, one, one other question. How far back is the farthest lot off the road?
Uh, the, uh, the proposed dedicated roadway cul-de-sac is about nine hundred feet and the private drive is another, uh, four to five hundred feet approximately. So thirteen to fourteen hundred feet.
You get a fire truck back on that private drive and turn around?
Um, the private drive is proposed, uh, or is shown as sixteen feet wide. Um, and there is, uh, two T, T driveways proposed near the end of it. Um, I, we would have to review the, the exact requirements for a fire truck. If that's, uh, if that's something that is necessary, then we can modify those, uh, driveway intersections, I believe. Currently we're proposing a hydrant at the, uh, at the very end of the cul-de-sac on the west end of the cul-de-sac. So conceivably a fire truck would pull into the cul-de-sac area and, and stop at the cul-de-sac and drag hose to those homes back there. Would probably be the most likely scenario.
Five hundred feet.
Thirteen, fifteen hundred total. Sort of.
Okay.
I think the, uh, NFPA requirement is a thousand feet, within a thousand feet of a hydrant. Well, well within that, approximately four to five hundred is how far they are from the, from the hydrant to cul-de-sac.
Okay. Um, any other-
Um, yeah, I had one question. Um, have you been in communications with the nature conservancy on this project at all?
Um, yes, we have.
Okay.
There's, uh, there's currently, uh, an access easement along the south property line to the conservancy, which is, um, more or less a farm lane right now.
Yes, it's worked. Some of that land has been worked.
So, uh, we, you know, we're proposing a dedicated right-of-way to, to extend all the way to the south property line for the length of the cul-de-sac. And additionally, the, the parcel, uh, near Jackson Road would be dedicated. Um, so there would be, uh, the access would be maintained and improved, we anticipate, for, uh, for the conservancy meadows in the back.
My thoughts were around possibly a, a trail connection or something of that nature, um, that we could look into, I guess. Uh, because there is a, a trails, a recommended trails overlay and I haven't had a chance to see how that would work in proximity with this project.
It, it's certainly possible.
Okay.
Uh, there's a, there's a, you know, significant, um, parcel of land being dedicated ex- immediately adjacent to that land as well as the right-of-way.
Okay.
So there should be a, definitely an opportunity to connect.
Okay. Anyone else on the board have questions right now? Anyone in the audience like to, uh, speak to this application or this sketch?
Just talk about the sewage.
Sir, if you could just come up and ask a question, become a star. Be like American Idol or something.
Yeah, uh, Gary Northrup at fourteen ninety Jackson Road, just, just across from it. I just, uh, what was the sewage system? I didn't understand that since we're all on septic systems up there.
Uh, we're proposing, uh, low-pressure sanitary force main, which is basically, uh, individual ejector pump for each proposed home, um, which is, uh, which is a, a small, uh, underground exterior tank and pump system owned by the homeowner that discharges to a two-inch, um, line, which would be owned by the municipality, which, uh, which would convey the sewage to the south approximately thirteen to fifteen hundred feet to where it would-
To the existing-
To an existing gravity system. Yep.
So what, what powers these in each home?
Each of the pumps is powered by a one hundred and ten volt or two hundred and twenty volt circuit from the home.
So if there's a power failure, what happens?
Um, there is a limited amount of storage in the system. The, the ejector system, the manufacturer that we typically use, Z1, they have, uh, a, a small amount of storage to accommodate that. Uh, otherwise there would need to be some kind of backup power.
Full house generator type of thing?
Something that we're doing or an individual generator for that circuit. They're not a large, uh, electrical demand.
Okay.
You know, they're, they're relatively smaller unit.
Okay. Okay. Just curious how you were gonna get rid of the sewage.
Thank you. Anyone else care to, uh, have a comment? Yes, ma'am. Come on up. And your address and your credit card information.
Hi, I'm, I'm Linda Shriver and I live at fourteen twenty or fourteen twenty-four Jackson Road, whichever one you choose. Um, I, this, uh, isn't particularly about this project, but just to voice this concern to the board, um, Jackson Road has been, um, I guess, uh, a place I've enjoyed living for a long time and, uh, there are some difficulties on the road with traffic, um, particularly the speed of the traffic. And, uh, we live down towards the end by Plank and, uh, have had the misfortune of having lots of people try to pass us as we're trying to stop and slow down and turn into our home. We've actually had an accident where my, uh, partner was hit by somebody trying to pass her as she was making a left-hand turn. So just to, uh, I guess, put it on record that as this area becomes more and more developed with this project, the next project, however many projects are going to be, I, I hope there's some consideration taken into the traffic issues on Jackson Road and appropriate measures taken. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to say a few words? Yes. Oh, you, you, sorry, but it's our, it's our rules.
I'm Elizabeth Shenowsky and I'm at fourteen thirty-four Jackson Road. I'm just curious as to what type of homes. You said they're going to be bigger lots, bigger homes, smaller homes? Um, I mean, the, the character of the neighborhood, except for, uh, the Cassidy subdivision, is kind of, um, older homes, not, not huge. And I'm just wondering if the character is going to kind of stay the same or if it's, you know, we're going to be having these mansions that, uh, kind of don't fit in in my, my way of thinking?
I got another question for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Nicholas D'Angelo and I built quite a few subdivisions in Penfield. Uh, one, but perhaps just down the street, Alden Glen, which is got over a hundred homes. And these homes are going to be anywhere from three thousand square feet and up because such a big lot, in order to get the return on it, you gotta put these in homes. We're not going to build chicken coops, let's put it this way. So it'll be like a Amstead Estates, uh, State Road, we did that too. And, um, want to buy, uh, shoe craft there, private, private drive, Misty Trail, we did that too. These are all big homes.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes.
I live at fourteen ninety-one Jackson Road, just south of part of the thousand acre swamp that is next to their property. And you mentioned about the sewage, um, going to the south. Is it going to go into the, the wetlands part of the swamp or, I mean, is it going to affect our property?
Uh, the, the, it's, it's basically a sewer extension that's going to connect to the existing municipal sewer system to the treatment plant. It's collective closure in its entire-
Could you get, talk into the microphone?
And nothing will happen to that space that's between the Red Farm House and this property that's going to be built. And that's part of the, of the thousand-acre swamp.
So we're going with our force main, we go down the, uh, rural ri- rightway, rural county rightway. We're going to the ri- road rightway. We're not going into the private.
Currently, uh, the, the sewer-
Can you talk and, uh, use a, use the mic?
Sure.
If you could. You, there's a handheld there too.
Oh, there is.
Um, yeah, currently, uh, we're proposing the, the sewer pipe extension, uh, to be located in the, uh, right-of-way of Jackson Road, so it'll be in the, in the, uh, the municipal own land. Uh, it's a, it's a buried pipe, two-inch diameter pipe, um, which will connect to existing town, uh, town Penfield system. Um, no sewage will be discharged anywhere but to the collection system and the treatment plants.
So that part of the wetland that's right next to us will remain the same? I don't know if you're going to be cleaning it up or what?
Yeah, the, uh, the, the plan shows the limits of the project, which is, um, there, there's an existing fence, uh, to the south of where the wave farm buildings were. Um, the buildings have been taken down and a pond is proposed in that area. Aside from that, there's no impacts to the south. The pipe will be buried. Um, the excavation for the pipe would be located immediately adjacent to the pavement of Jackson Road.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to comment on this? Going once? Okay, any other, uh, comments from the board? Do you have any, uh, finishing statements or, uh, anything you'd like to say?
We hope to get started soon, so.
Okay. Um, just like any other sketch plan, we'll, uh, get our comments together and, uh, get a letter off to you, uh, shortly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, we'll, uh, adjourn this, uh, evening's festivities. Thank you all for coming and have a great night.